Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to come in freedom and sometimes we forget to thank you for that because all good things come from you. We thank you, Lord, for loving us. We thank you, Lord, for loving us enough, giving us your Son who sacrificed on the cross that we had everlasting life. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy and your grace. We ask, Lord, for guidance. We ask, Lord, for you to be center of our life and for you to be center of our thoughts and our desires. And help us, Lord, to say and do those things that glorify you and not ourselves. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's from the commissioner.
Way, way off.
Just curious.
Is it Kirk's or is it?
No.
Yeah, it was at Durant.
Durant.
Yeah.
Love Durant.
Yeah. It's where our county cook school is at. Oh, yeah.
Last century local.
Yeah. Our next brick connect, which it was really good last time. It's at Atoka, that's where he goes, I'm like going. What happened to centrally located?
Pretty much like always other classes, Tulsa or Columbia. How are you, sport?
Good. Last week of assessments. And I didn't even wait till the last week, there should be a copy for me. Make sure. I think certain take that check over. So I don't think it's ever in here, that's why. What conversation I'm trying to get. Make sure. That's why she's going up there. Um, we don't have first year report of getting input to go over there, so.
I just knew. He just asked me to make them check.
But we won't, I mean, if it's not in match pay, we're not, so if you want me to pay it.
I don't think he was going to get back the tour.
I was going to say, you don't want me to go over and get it, right?
Well, yeah, I thought the check was going to be today.
Well, no, not unless you guys tell me to, because I don't have the receiving report and that stuff waiting for us, so I told them to pull it and get it over here and add it to match pay. Top back line, the letter receiving report. Yeah, unless we have all the invoice received, but that's some of the terms.
Do you want? I think I've got a bucket. I can't remember how many buckets that was. I think I got five or six buckets. No, four buckets. Anyway, I did five miles, Allen. Then I did from Carmel to Old Lake, which I think is nine miles and cost me $3,000. Ridiculous.
I bought something there to go up there early.
About $215 in a bucket.
I don't know if they give you discounts.
Thank you. Unless we have all three pieces, we got pull it, unless you guys tell us to. We got a lot I thought about.
About now, we're almost two years.
Oh, yeah.
We're down there in Allen, and if you don't do it, they'll burn right underneath the road. Around here, I don't have so much trouble. Ground's a little tighter. Gophers.
Yeah. Yeah.
You ever seen that?
No, I haven't heard of it, never seen it, and I've heard of it.
Oh, yeah, Hydras works about as well, too.
I remember, um, Gastroine, we always had to have those gopher gassers on stock in the co-op. I guess he used those gopher gassers, and I'm like, you gotta find a current runner, they don't work. I don't know, we just stuck one in every run. Gotta have that stuck.
Good old house cat, everybody was good.
My dog, he does a good job at the real shaggy park. He's like finding, like, gee, thank you for bringing it. And then he brings it and he puts it right in front of our door.
That's a gift to you.
Lucky we like it. And I always brag on him, always give him a tree and just like, she blew up my yard.
Doing right now. You got one gopher out there. She's got home.
My puppy that died had already killed two gophers.
Aw, he was a good gopher killer.
And he would sit by the hole. He would just sit there.
That's what my dog is, just suck it, lay down, and just stare at it all day long.
All day. He would sit there.
For someone to come by and see.
Well, I haven't been thinking, I must have seen that reimbursement for yields, maybe that. The 23rd at 1 o'clock is another meeting. I can't make it.
I'll be gone too. Yeah, I'll be on that day. I'll be in Arkansas.
That's fine. That's the only one I can make. So, I make it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll be running that day.
All right.
Bye.
Like purchase.
Two hundred and fifty short for district two, and that's all.
That's the only single one, that's the break spot for me. And they send me emails, and what's this guy selling. Why did you accept the blanket purchase? Or should I say? No, better. Bye. Got two road crossing, oh, wait, road crossing permits.
There's like three of them.
Seen a little pad and a little black one. Okay, now we have two private property easements for District Three.
Last month, I told you I was in the works of getting this done. Since we've gotten the new software, all of our commercial data isn't coming over real well into the new. It's there, it's just pricing exorbitantly high, really high. So, we have actually not rolled new values on any commercial property in the county in the last two years. We've just kept it at what it was. So, what we really want to do is do a massive cleanup of all commercial properties in the county at once, so that we're not treating commercial properties of Burlington any different than we're treating commercial properties in Allen. One of the ways that we really wanted to be able to do this was have an outside source come in and just double check everything that I've done. The reason I've been holding off on getting this contract to you guys was because I want to pay for this out of my cash account. My cash account is limited statutorily to computer related expenses, so I wanted to double check with the state auditor's office. I did send in an email to Jesse, and he forwarded it up to Instagram, and I think somebody else signed off on that, too. It was just Jesse and Nancy. Cheryl, Cheryl also looked at it. And they said, yes, they feel like because this is, because of my data software conversion, and in a way, it's going to work almost as an outside audit source, that they will look at every single commercial property in Alphava County in a matter of about a week. And then they will re-measure, they will take extra good notes on exteriors, frame type builds. Sometimes we look for clues on how the frame is done, so it would basically be a complete revamp. The contract, he offers to do data input for us also, but I told him I want to do my own data input, but that is in the contract, that he does do data input for $7 per parcel. I said, really, I would just rather do the data input ourselves. But they will go out, and they'll be well marked, we'll advertise, but they do a complete assessment, complete measure, and look at every single commercial property. This would include every single exempt commercial property. For years, we just haven't had any information on the size of the churches, the size of the schools. Those things can all be beneficial, as we now know, for insurance type purposes. So, having that data in our system for every commercial property, regardless of whether it's a city-owned exempt property or whether it's a privately owned business in town. So, that's what this contract does. I will say that I did get recommendations from other counties that are using them. Woods County has used them for years, and Major County has started using them for, actually, their regular visual inspection. They actually no longer employ visual inspection people in the office. Different counties are using them for commercial marijuana grows and things that seem too dangerous for, so they'll go out and kind of assume some of that liability. Do you guys have any questions on what this company does or what it would benefit?
Did you say he's going to do it in a week?
He'll do it in a week.
The whole county?
The whole county.
That's a lot of buildings.
He'll bring out, he'll bring out.
Taxes and influence, too, so.
He'll bring out about five guys. He said in Major County, they do, they do the entire, they do about 8,000 parcels in Woods County in about a week.
Where are they out of?
They're out of the Tulsa area, I think Claremore, maybe, somewhere northeast Oklahoma, but they're an Oklahoma company. The gentleman's background is, both of his parents are realtors, and so he's just kind of grown up in appraisal business, and then he's kind of worked for an assessor's office for years, and then he's kind of created his own business, just more as a consulting type of visual inspection. But because I wanted to take the funds to pay for this out of my cash account, I was very hesitant. I wanted to wait until the state auditor signed off on that. And I have that email, if you could see the state auditor's email. On the back is what I wrote as my question, and on the front is basically the approval.
What's the overall cost?
It'll be no more than $15,000. That's 600 parcels. I actually have like 580 commercial properties in the county, but he gave me an estimate for 600, and then it's $25 per parcel.
At that price, why wouldn't you just reach out with your visual inspections, unless somebody like that's starting in visual inspections? Because you can't almost go around and check them for $25 per person yourself, can you?
Because we've off the new track. Actually, I would have to let the employees go, I think, to offset, because the majority of what Melissa does all year long is visual inspection. Now, this time of year, for the first three months, she does a lot of business assessments, but it basically would be taking a job away from a local person, is what it would be doing.
I'm just curious, it just seems so cheap to, and then you got outside sourced to their problems, not yours.
Now, Major County, because they had one person retiring, and then their assessor was also not running again, they actually chose to absorb those positions, and that's why they're sharing that. And Woods County only has three people in their office, even though they're a much bigger county, so they actually utilize this company to do visual inspection. And then they only have, no, they have four employees. They have four, they've got Natasha and Cindy, and so they got the same staff, but that's how Woods County is able to carry the load of the business, because they have an outsourced And honestly, I really think that our local people appreciate someone local coming onto their land.
Sure.
So, if I'm going to go out.
Depends on who it is.
If I'm going to go out to some Farmer Joe up north and look, walk through his field to take pictures of his barn, or take pictures of a new house, or something like that, I think they appreciate the personal, but it's someone local that they can call, and not some guy from Tulsa on their property, so.
Or vehicle. I'll make sure to accept the contract. I'll second.
No, man. Bye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for that. If you have any questions, please, I'll.
When will they be doing that?
In May is the time they're looking at. They have to coordinate that date with several other counties, because they bring a whole crew of gentlemen out, so they'll have different people in different parts of the county all at once, is how they're able to do that many parcels.
And they need another internal structure for the buildings, is that what you said?
There are clues on, like, the way the, even brick buildings, there's clues with weepole type things like that.
No, no, the part, part there in Burlington, just the, all the buildings there in Burlington, they have what types they are and all that, if they need that.
Really?
So, yeah. Or we did that for our insurance to make it cheaper, but I can get it for it if you want, but somewhere.
Thank you, that's a wonderful resource. But, yeah, there's, there's clues and training of how we go out and look at stuff. Some of the older buildings are easier, because you can almost see the cracks of the things, but they will, they will be also checking, so my year built has, there's so many things in my data that I inherited, that says 1960, like, the whole county was built in 1960. And so they'll be taking a more expert look, saying, you know, I think you need to drop this year to this, and then you can put remodel codes on or whatever. But they'll have a, they'll have an advice for us on, it's, so it's almost an audit as well as a recheck, and then help us get to where we're actually need to be on price.
Cool.
Remember, write me a copy of that after I sign up. Oh, okay, after Will signs it. Okay, I'll email it to him today.
Transfer from coming to rescue, I don't know, to coming to rescue, got the upgrade.
I'll make the motion to accept the transfer. Two pages there, or what?
Yeah, second page is just the. Yeah, second page is just the, the, the accounts, the stuff, the stuff there.
Right.
The stuff there.
Okay.
Chip.
I'll just work my words as my name is.
Yeah, but I wasn't gonna point that out, so... They're all the same.
I'll make the motion, second.
County general.
The last one.
Question three, number one, you know?
It's made us so picky about it being on the agenda right now, gosh, come on. My paper was right, just that they didn't listen.
I'll make the motion to accept the transfer.
Say. November. Now, would you appropriate me to direct this ovation?
There's a copy for each one of you, but if you guys will sign my copy, um, where Donna and I have signed on it, and look at the left-hand, or right-hand column on the variants, there's, the variants. Yay. There's, well, there's our, our extra copy, um...
Or Ethan's, okay.
I just made a copy for each one of you, so you guys can look at them.
But you just did sign at the bottom of this one?
Yeah, just anywhere at the bottom, just showing that it went through the meeting and we're good, and I'll just start printing those for the officer meetings then, and we'll be good. I'll let you know ahead of time, but for some reason, it does not. Am I making motion, all right, so we accepted and we're good?
I'll make the motion, second.
I'm pursuing this, somebody's really adjourned. Is that on that? All the paper.